Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Commissioners' Meeting on November 22nd here noon. When it first had due a pleasant allegiance and then following a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Very good. Before we begin the Commissioners' Meeting, we actually have to entertain a Warren County Public Hearing. So I would like to call that meeting to order. Just want to announce that the meeting, both of these meetings are being recorded. Public hearing item is a modification to the 2021 CDBG funds. Could you please speak to that?
Yes, and so the purpose of the hearing is we are deleting an activity from the 2021 fiscal year, which was the Bear Lake Center Street Reconstruction. The reason being is that that project has been completed, therefore the funds are no longer needed, and we will be reallocating those towards the Center Street and Clarendon Reconstruction Project. And because we are removing that project that was approved, we are required to hold a public hearing. And so it is truly just a formality because Bear Lake is completed and there's no money to be sent home.
Okay, very good. I don't think we need to make a, do we need to make a motion to modify that? I guess we do.
I think that's on the meeting.
Cindy?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment? Nope, okay, then we will, can I get a motion for adjournment? Second. Okay. Sit. Hello. So now when we begin the Warren County Commissioners' Meeting, just a couple of announcements. First, the meeting will be recorded. We did have one executive session held since the last meeting. And we had one correspondence received, which is a funding request from the Youngsville Borough to the County Commissioners. That said, move on to public comment. We have one item listed for public comment, which is Warren Works. But before we do anything with that, since it was planned, I didn't know if there were any other public comments to reconsider before we move on.
Can I speak to the borough request?
You may speak to it, sure.
Thank you. As you know, we sent the letter of request. Our reservoir is leaking. We need to replace our, we're going to replace it with liners. I am going to apply for grants, but because of the urgency of the project, we are asking that the Commissioners grant us funds to complete this. We'd like to get, if possible, get moving on it so we can do repairs in the spring. So we would like, you know, Commissioners to respectfully look over this request and hopefully grant the request for Youngsville Borough. It's not, it's a necessity. It's not discretionary. It's a necessity that has to be done. So I'm just requesting that Commissioners would fund us those great monies to repair our reservoir.
Thank you.
Wendy, did you end up applying for the LSA?
I'm going to, yes. Yes, I have the letters of support. I received both of those this past week, so I will be applying for the LSA. However, like I say, the urgency does tend to take a little bit of time. So daily, our reservoir is leaking our treated water and it's making our pumps pump more frequently. So we would actually like to get those funds, you know, sooner than the grant funding.
Is this something that you didn't know about?
We did not know about it. Our foreman went to check on the reservoirs and noticed a puddling outside of the reservoir. And they tested the water and it is treated water. So their assumption is that they're leaking. So one of the reservoirs is leaking. It is an undertaking. They have to literally remove the roof of the reservoir to lower their 1,500-pound liners down into. So we're going to replace both because of the extensive, you know, work that has to be done. So we're going to replace both at the same time. We're going to install a RAPA system. That was part of a DEP correction plan. They would like us to know. We have an alarm system now, alarms when the level gets low. It goes to our foreman's phone. But the RAPA system, on any given time, it will show the levels. And that way we can record, you know, the levels of the reservoir. So we're going to follow the upgrades and the installation of the liners at the same time.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, go ahead.
First, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Next item under the public comment is Warren Works. Imagine there's been here to speak to that today. There are some materials, I think, that you have handed out, if anybody else would like some.
Yes, I gave you both copies of the PowerPoint slides that we had. Gives you kind of synopsis as well as the full text of our charter for the Warren Works Initiative. Before I start, I do want to publicly thank Ben and Jeff for your service to the county. We're going to be missed, and we appreciate the partnership and the hard work that was put in. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
So you're both going. Best luck and best wishes in the future. Massachusetts Road.
Yeah, I mean, it's a terrible place.
Yeah, Boston, you know.
You have to be a Patriots fan and all those champions. Best of luck.
Your name, that's why it's moving there, actually. Sounds like it was a target in relocation besides his football desires.
Yeah, I mean, I picked a terrible time to, to go to see a game, I guess, but.
Tickets are a lower price.
Exactly. Go with this. The barrier to entry is much lower for me.
Yeah. So if I could just do an overview, and you folks are well aware of the Warren Works program. We've been working on this, Sean Lockery, Andy Sokolski, John and I have been working on this collectively for the last 18 months, partially, but when we look back through our notes, that's when we first started talking about this in real earnest. It kind of is situation analysis that drives us to this point. As you're well aware, with our, we as a county have suffered significant population loss over the last decade. Projections that we're seeing now that are coming out of the Center Federal of Pennsylvania and everybody else that does projections on population are showing the same trend is going to continue for the next 20 and 30 years to the point where they're projecting that we will have experienced a 12% loss in our overall population between now and 2050. Much more disconcerting than that is a 22% loss in that core of 26 to 60-year-olds. That really vital piece of the puzzle, and basically that's our labor pool. So we all know as employers, at this point in time, it's a struggle to find employees to fill open spaces. It's always a conversation we have for job, employer recruitment, employer expansion, et cetera. So to allow that to be decimated by another 22% over the next 30 years is just unsustainable as a community. So it's the wake-up call that we heard time and time and time again. But it's really time to reopen our ears collectively and do something about it. Got a lot of people across the county doing a lot of good things. Organizations, individuals, municipalities are working hard. They're working in good projects to improve the community. But we're all working independently of one another. We may be aware of what one community or one organization is doing, but we're not providing any kind of mutual support across the board to make sure that those projects and initiatives are well-planned, well-funded, and well-executed. So we need to get better at that. And a lot of this came out of the County Comprehensive Plan. And these aren't things that we came up with. You're well aware of them. So the overview and the purpose of Warren Works. It has five key elements. One of them is a common brand. We've identified the very first crucial activity to be undertaken via the Warren Works scenario would be to get a county-wide branding initiative, the county-wide branding study completed, a county-wide brand, and all those necessary marketing tools from that brand to support that brand developed by a third-party consultant. Exceptionally important that we all get on the same page and we have the same conversation, the same look, the same look of what, who are we as a county? Why are we, in fact, the community of choice? And the municipalities have to market it that way. The organizations, the Chamber Development Association will market it that way, as will private individual companies. Our intention is to create a toolkit and then work directly with those private sector entities and nonprofit organizations and smaller municipalities across the county to make sure that they have the toolkit and know how to use it so that if we're marketing opportunities anywhere in the county, whether it be for tourism, whether it be for residential recruitment or employee recruitment, we're all singing on the same page and in the same framework. Strategic planning, not referring to redoing comprehensive plans, but planning how do we implement across the county those items that were brought forth by those comp plans from both the city and the county? And how do we move the community forward? Prioritizing projects, prioritizing resources, et cetera, through a broad voice of people from across the county. So we need to get that by him. Project coordination and event support. Warren Works is not intended to be a takeover kind of initiative. It's really a support organization to share resources, to share activities, to help folks out in areas that maybe they have not had experience in events, but also to pick up that marketing piece and make the current events now better understood, better marketed, better, better sold. Funding and resources, particularly on the resource side. I think we have, the stakeholder group is a very varied group of individuals and organizations, and they have varying levels of resources. But they all have resources, whether they be financial resources, human resources, whatever it may be. So as they come to the table, we expect them to bring their resources, and we will put them to the best use possible and share those resources across the county. And communication and marketing, absolutely essential to us. Getting together, getting in the same boat, and grabbing the same kind of whoring, actually whoring and rowing in the same general direction. We found ourselves almost in the same boat a couple times as a county, but we found we were grabbing different kinds of whores and going in a different direction. So we just didn't maximize our opportunity. Structurally, we have, the Chamber have committed to administering this program on the, on the assumption and on the expectation that we'll be able to find the resources necessary to do that. It's a bit of a daunting task to take on the administration with county-wide communication web. We will be calling together stakeholders. We've applied to a list of a temporary list, preliminary list of stakeholders that crosses all the municipal boundaries. We have had direct conversations with the city of Warren, had several communications and conversations and presentations to the council of governments. We've talked to you folks a couple of times, and we'll hear again today. So those are some key stakeholders. But essentially, this is open to anyone in Warren County who has a stake in Warren County improving and getting better and is focused on, we've got to reverse the trend. We've got to break that trend of population loss. So three years hence, worst-case scenario, we've leveled off in terms of population. So stop getting number one, stop the bleed, and stop getting number two, improve the population, and start building it from there. Going through this quickly, I think. Structurally, I mean, it's going to be based on meetings. We will facilitate that and bring the group together, keep track of all the folks that are stakeholders, give the strategic oversight, the strategic planning. Most importantly, before I lose my voice totally, the budget, not a cheap date. And you will see that we have in year one, a total budget of $340,000. That includes $140,000 in WCCBI personnel expense. It will include a Warren Works administrator and a director of marketing that would cover across the county. There is also $80,000 in third-party marketing. That's the consultant who is going to be doing the branding initiative and creating that brand from the information that was gleaned and picked up through the comprehensive plan process. Then another $20,000 that really covers the marketing, actually taking the toolkit and pushing it out, pushing it out to the world. We've looked, I've had several meetings with Ken Slocum, had conversations with the DCD. We've made conversations with Northwest Commission. Have a meeting with Kyle Han and shortly Senator Casey's staff. So we will be absolutely looking for state and federal grant fundings to drive this program forward in latter years. But you're well aware of the cycle of grant dollars, that they will not be available in 2024. So we've worked out throughout, in the spring of the year, we'll be making applications to as many of those programs as we can find for both the administrative expenses that are involved as well as the projects. The first project being the branding. But every year, I would suspect that there will be a project of some sort being facilitated, administered, supported through Warren Works in some corner of the county. So it's absolutely critical that we front-end fund this locally. So what we've proposed, three areas of expenses, administrative, communications and marketing, and then the special projects. So the first year ask is essentially a equal sharing of that $300,000, of the $340,000 total, between the city of Warren, the county of Warren, and the WCCBI. We already have $40,000 committed for the branding initiative. So we have that private fund, those funds at hand. So we're looking to, to close the gap on that $300,000 in administrative and formal marketing initiatives and activities through 2024. So we'll be going, for 2025, '26 will be on. We're hoping to mitigate that $100,000 a year significantly through grant programs and other support, other foundation support that we're able to generate and bring into the fold as we need it to be utilized. So that's it. I mean, we need, we think it's time, we come together as a community and truly get aggressive on stemming the tide that we've experienced, the population loss. Thinking back to John F. Kennedy, if not us, who? If not now, when? So we could appreciate your consideration. And here, if you answer any questions you may have.
Yes, I, a bow. And the answers may be in this packet, and maybe I need to read it in more detail. So the, the cost to the chamber, like I'm assuming is going to be additional staff, correct? Like, so is that two people, or is it one person, or three people?
We're looking at two people. An administrative person as well as a marketing director, so two people.
And I guess, please, another question I have. I mean, is it, is this like a contract situation? Or, because I mean, you're pitching a three-year plan. I mean, are they going to come in with the understanding that at the end of that three years, they're transitioning to something else? Or is the hope that it would be a consistent funding stream beyond the three years?
We're hopeful and fully confident that at the end of the three years, it's just going to be a little brand, and this is the way we do business. The structure will be in place, and it's just the way we do business. And therefore, the funding will establish after three years. So that's, that's the way it's put together.
Then the $80,000 you have for the agency.
Yes.
Like, I'm assuming that you have the responses that you got, that you have somebody that you really like, and that's what that's based on?
The one we really liked a bit is actually $95,000. But we're confident they have a lot of sourcing of information and getting background data that we feel input, harvesting that input from the community is already built down by Maccat Engineering through the city and county. So we feel really confident that we can talk to them. We don't have to reinvent that wheel. Let's take what we were told last year, it hasn't changed. Get drive that cost down to the point where we get to that $80,000 level. You know, you asked the question, do we really like that one firm? We do. We know that they've done a lot of work for Hurson Entertainment, which is the Dollywood and Silver Dollar City. It's a family-based theme park. A lot of family-oriented work, a lot of good values related to what we think are reflected in Warren County. And they certainly understand destination marketing and building those kinds of brands. So I feel like they're, we haven't completed our interviewing process, but we already know the people who've selected them and what their value system is. And we think this is going to be a good fit. Have you ever been to Gatlinburg? I have several times been to Gatlinburg. I've been to Silver Dollar City a couple of times through my business. We do a lot of business with them, so I also know them from the other side. They pay their bills, and they're really honorable people to work with. It's a pretty magical experience in their parks.
Has there been any comment back from the city of Warren? Because I know you just, you pitched this quite recently.
It was, we were there on Monday evening. Positive feedback. We've had no formal commitment, response to the ask. But we refer to it as teeing it up nicely for their final budget conversation next week. Real formal feedback from a number of the members of council seems to be very favorable.
Well, I remember when I first took office, the city and county were thinking about trying to find a way to share some type of a marketing identity. And of course, then COVID hit, so that changed the dynamic there. But in any event, I was, I was just curious to hear what, what feedback you received. So we are in, you know, preparation of the 2024 budget. So I, we appreciate your presentation. We'll take it back and have discussion regarding it. So any comments from the Commissioners?
Just briefly, I know I mentioned this before, but this seems to me that it's something that could potentially come out of the Erie Bank account that would fit into kind of the purpose of that fund. And to your point about if not us, when? We've sat on that for how many years now? Used it occasionally strategically, but mostly it's sitting there. It might be time to use that bullet. May not be a silver bullet, but.
I appreciate that.
Very fitting, because today is the 16th anniversary of J.R.P.'s assassination. So it's quite fitting.
Dave was talking about last year, and it really stuck.
Population of crime has an impact in, you know, what taxes we can collect. And we never want to have to raise taxes, but that's, you know, kind of the unfortunate consequence of that. So, you know, if there was, I would consider this a long-term investment. For any contribution that we made to Warren Works, I recognize that, you know, we are losing population. I also see some real opportunity that we've seen, you know, across the county in some initiatives that have been put forth. So I appreciate if, if not when, now, how. So that's my comments. Very good. Anything else?
Appreciate your consideration.
So that would be a transfer from a savings account, which would still be neatly reflected in budget.
Right.
Releasing the budget on December 5th, I believe.
December 5th?
Yes.
December 5th, which we were intending to announce today as well. Very good.
And so you'll know the answer then, I guess.
Thank you so much.
We have some more budget iterations to work on, that's for sure.
Well, if you have any further questions, or you want to discuss how we're budgeting and planning to utilize the funds, we'd be happy to come back and work through that process. You know, we understand it's a complicated ask, and you have a lot of responsibilities. We really appreciate your working with us on this and helping us work through it.
Good. All right. Thank you very much. All right. We will move on to the consent agenda then. So in front of you, you have the minutes of the November 8 public meeting. Just review them, if there are any other changes that need to be made or clarifications. We can discuss that. I don't believe we have a finance report today. And then we can move on to proclamations. There are two proclamations. One is Small Business Saturday, and the other is Thanksgiving. I would be happy to just highlight Small Business Saturday and that particular proclamation that, you know, they, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 small businesses, and nearly half of all Americans are employed by small businesses. Studies show that supporting the growth of small businesses provide the majority of economic growth in the community. Small businesses are the backbone of Warren County's economy, and the local small businesses support our community in the way of wages, taxes, donations to local schools and charities. So the county of Warren supports our local businesses. It creates jobs, boosts our local economy, and preserves the community. We, Warren County Commissioners proclaim November 26, 2023, as Small Business Saturday. We urge all residents to make a special effort to support all small businesses on Small Business Saturday and all year long. So I personally try to do that as well. So I appreciate the proclamation. And the next item is proclamation associated with Thanksgiving. Commissioner Caffeyland, would you be willing to share?
Sure. So as I'm sure you're all aware, Thanksgiving has been celebrated kind of off and on for 400 years now. It started being forced at the, at Plymouth. And it wasn't until the Civil War that Abraham Lincoln actually made it into a federal holiday, and we've celebrated that since. And Warren County would like to participate in the federal holiday by passing this proclamation November 23, Thanksgiving Day. And that would be in celebration of many things that we have to be grateful for and to celebrate the charitable spirit.
Thank you very much. All right. That said, do I have approval for the consent agenda?
So moved to second.
Okay. Any discussion, or is it a favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Nothing under unfinished business. Now we're moving to new business. The first is Resolution 3258, approved budget revisions for the CDBG funds.
Those can probably both be done at the same time.
And 2021, which is Resolution 3259. We heard earlier what those resolutions represent. So I'd ask for a motion to approve combined 3215, 3259, approval of those CDBG fund changes.
So moved to second.
Okay. Any discussion, or is it a favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, next is the, woo! MCM Consulting for the update.
They're friggin fireworks.
I'll bring sparklers.
You keep dropping the mic, right? The next one is an agreement with MCM Consulting for the update of the 2020 Hazardous Mitigation Plan. We had a ticket from Scott Rose that came in asking for us to have this project start. This plan is required to be updated every five years, and MCM's handled the two last updates for us. It looks like it'll start mid-2024 with a completion date of no later than July 31, 2025. Any comments? There's a professional services agreement listed here.
I would just add that the reason that we're moving it up a little bit is due to grant funding.
Do we have grant funding for portion of it, or all of it?
A portion of it, I believe.
A portion of it, okay.
It'll be, I mean, it'll be, it's really only going to be like six months ahead of schedule, but.
Is there STP dollars to go with this, or is that something else? I don't see anything there. Okay. Yeah, I don't see a specific fee associated. Here we go. So the total project price would be $75,491.25, and then it's outlined there with the different items that will be challenged and managed. Do I get, can I have a motion to approve the MCM Consulting agreement?
So moved to second.
Any discussion? Agreement, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. The next one is the government software services. For the printing of the 2023 Homestead/Farmstead applications. We have a, it will be in your packet here. Appears as though we would pay GSS 40 cents for each mailer. And they invoice us the above rates, and I'm assuming that's required. It's just, and they are best at doing that particular piece of the pie there. Any comments or questions, or? Nope. All right. But I get a motion. All right, could I get a motion to approve the GSS 2023 Homestead/Farmstead application?
Moved to second.
Okay. Any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Next is Eaton UPS Services. This relates specifically, it looks like, to Warren County Public Safety, and its proposal associated with the power quality equipment. The services, excuse me?
Sorry, not to be confused with UPS.
Not the, not UPS, that's correct. How, we'll just call it Eaton, Power Business Worldwide. The proposal is for a year, the coverage is going to be a cost of $7,589.29 for 2024. I get a motion to approve this service?
So moved to second. So briefly, this is for the battery backups?
Yes.
Pretty mission-critical?
Pretty mission-critical. It's cost of doing business for public safety, that's for sure. All, all right, any discussion other than that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then lastly, it is the Warren County Agricultural Land Preservation Board has submitted a letter to Warren County Commissioners requesting a number of individuals to be, become members of the board of directors for three-year terms. Any comments before we vote on this?
Just say that this was a board that the commissioners would normally make appointments to, and it kind of got lost in the shuffle of the last decade.
Oh, a whole decade, okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Anyway, we'll add it to the list of
Board appointments.
We need to keep on top of, but, you know, I guess they went to spend money out of it and realized that there were no, a lot, there were very few living board members on that bank account.
Oh, I do remember that. I do remember that. That's right. I do recall that now, yes.
Should we be getting reports from them?
I mean, they are the county, right, directors.
Well, I mean, I've never, I don't ever remember ever spending any time on this. Like, my point is, is like, if we're responsible for appointing people to the board, we should get some type of annual report from them or something, that states even what they do.
They do have some funding.
Yeah, well, I mean, if they always spend some money, but nobody's alive, it's like, how often do you do that?
Well, apparently not frequently.
Yeah, it just isn't like Goonies, where we have like a balloon to find where the money is.
From the greenways, which we have not given in quite a while.
Okay.
Their funding comes from greenways?
And we do that every year. We have to fill out a report and say, okay, there's nothing to give you.
Okay. Very good. So we don't, we're not supporting them financially, but we still have to approve their board of directors.
We only support them financially, should there be any easements or greenways that deal with them.
Gotcha.
Then we give them that money that's collected.
Gotcha. Very good. All right. Can I get a motion to approve this specific appointment to the land preservation board as outlined in the letter on November 14th?
Moved to second.
All right, discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Any commissioner comments? The only thing that, one, of course, is budget will be out for public review, getting my Bs and Ps mixed up, on December 5th.
Yes.
So we're working diligently on trying to avoid any type of significant changes there. The other thing is, when we just came back from the County Commission Association of Pennsylvania, we had talked about 911 funding, the whole, that whole prioritization and the funding sunsetting along with the 911 reauthorization necessary. The current amount that we collect is $1.65 per month, this is a surcharge, and the County Commission Association, as well as the counties supporting it, are asking that surcharge to $2.30 per person. It seems as though this started out with the Pennsylvania initiative and the county agreeing to manage it for a very small dollar amount, and that funding has not moved in any form of increase. So a much larger percent of our tax budget goes to funding something that was not an initiative that we took on, but yet was legislated to provide services. So I'm very supportive of that. I just wanted to make sure that we had that on the agenda, and the legislators are going to be meeting at the beginning of December, and I'm keen to make them aware of all of the services that we provide for 911, that we touch every household that calls that line regardless of where they live in the county, and it's available 24/7, and it's a very heavy lift for a county to have to manage.
So along those lines, they just, they just have a vote on that?
Who is they?
The legislature, like either in the House or in the Senate, I'm not sure.
It wasn't like, or another?
Yeah, but it, but one side of them voted on it, like, what, two weeks ago?
It was just a continuance.
It was just a continuance?
Yes.
I'm really glad that you brought this up, because I think that this is something that, like, we as a county could discuss in greater detail to the community, because I've seen various people, like, kind of complain about the notion of the, the funding increase, like, the fee increase to whatever, and that, you know, that's a tax on the people and all this other stuff. And I don't think that they realize that, that we've gone from most of the service being covered under the fee, and due to the formulas, a part of the problem too, to putting in $400,000-plus dollars a year to pay the difference because of that decline. So you're being taxed locally because the formula is screwed up and because the fee is inappropriate, not, like statewide. And if they change this, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but if they make this change, the formula also changes, and that would also affect our, what we would get from the fund as well.
The formula is not usually decided legislatively, however. You're absolutely right that.
It would trigger a change, like, I mean, it wouldn't, the legislation wouldn't change, but they would have to address the formula issue.
Been trying to get
Yes.
Address the formula issue for years, because Warren County takes it in the nose.
Yeah.
Whereas other counties, based on the strange formula, can have a glut
Yeah.
Leftover.
I mean, it's really important for people to know that their county is much smaller than ours even, that get as much money as we do, and, and
Yes.
It's not an equitable system, and so any kind of broad opposition to the increase in the fee is going to prevent that equitable, that inequitable system from being changed, and I think people need to know that.
And also understand that, you know, we as taxing bodies, who are taxing entities based on their property value, and that's our main force, our main source of income, this isn't, has nothing to do with property taxes per se, but a much larger percentage of those dollars are hitting here with the access for anyone, property owner or not having access. And I'm certainly in favor of everyone having access of 911 24/7, and I truly feel it's worth, from my perspective, $2.30 a month on my cell phone charge to have that access, and I would hope that be supportive of others as well.
Well, and the, and the, the point that I would, I guess, to summarize that, is the increase for that $400-some-odd thousand in difference to pay that, as opposed to the $1 increase? It's, that $400,000 is way more expensive for the average taxpayer in one county than that $1 fee increase.
Yes.
On an annualized basis, like, and I think that's the big thing that everybody needs to understand.
Yeah, definitely.
So the, if the legislation passes, it just creates the continuance, well, if it doesn't pass, then we have an unfunded mandate. If it does pass, and it just is a continuance, and doesn't actually increase, it may not be an unfunded, but it's an underfunded.
That's correct.
Yes.
That's right. It's an important service, but it's a lot of money in comparison to $2.30 a month. Very good, that was the only thing that I wanted to bring back from the High Commissioner's Association, and so if there's, you know, opportunity to speak to legislatures, that would be great. I think that's, it was the big takeaway for me this last time. So any other comments? Nope? Okay, how about a motion for a German? Very good. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.